Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lancaster City Council Finance Meeting. I am your host, with the most, and we're going to get right into new resolutions, starting with, if you noticed, my agenda's changed a little bit. I gave you guys hints on your resolutions and ordinances, so you're welcome. Actually, it was a hint for me when I'm taking notes. Anyways, temporary resolution 7925 coming through Public Works, Ms. Teener.
And that will be Kurt. Are you explaining that?
Good evening. So, this is a resolution to allow us to apply for OPWC funding for our 2027 paving program, which will include the Hubert and Reese addition. This is just money that will supplement our three mil levy money to go towards paving that neighborhood.
And that will probably be, what, 2027?
2027 construction, yes. Yeah, not this coming year. We'll have a resolution soon to go for that project. This will be the following year.
So, the Reese and Hubert area of 2027.
Questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Teener, I have Mr. Luftenberg as your second with three readings?
Yes.
Okay. Temporary resolution 8025 also coming through Public Works, Ms. Teener.
Yes, this is for mowing for next year for contracts, and unless Tim has anything to say, it's the normal we do every year.
He's shaking his head, yes. Any questions from anyone? No?
Mrs. Kreitz will be my second.
Okay, thank you. Temporary resolution 8125, that is coming through Finance. That is for our yearly contract with Reynoldsburg, if the law director would like to speak on that.
Sure, thank you. So, my office prosecutes all adult misdemeanor crimes that occur in Fairfield County and are cited into the Fairfield County Municipal Court, and that includes the portions of Reynoldsburg that are in Fairfield County. And because of that, Reynoldsburg pays us a fee to offset our cost of prosecution. All of that money goes into the general fund. It's approximately $10,000, and we're prosecuting between 60 and 70 cases a year for them generally. We try and keep our numbers on par with what we're charging the county. The county also pays us to do the unincorporated areas, and then Pickerington pays us to do what happens inside the city of Pickerington as well. So, this is just the annual piece to do Reynoldsburg. Sometimes, based on their budgets, the municipalities or the political subdivisions will want to do one year, sometimes they'll want to do two years. So, Reynoldsburg wants to be one year right now, and that's where we're at. We just need your permission to negotiate a contract with them to do that. Thanks.
Any questions from anyone? Yes, Tom?
So, how do we come up with that number? I'm just curious.
So, like I said, we basically know what we spend per case on all of our cases, whether it's prosecuting it for the city, prosecuting it for the county, prosecuting it for Pickerington or Reynoldsburg. And we try and keep all of those numbers about the same. Obviously, we have a lot more cases from Lancaster, so Lancaster tends, the spend is obviously more, but the other three, we try to keep, you know, relatively, what's the word I'm looking for? They correlate essentially to the number of cases that they're sending us to work on.
Do you just keep a running average of what comes out of Reynoldsburg?
Yeah, I have totals that I get from the clerk's office, can give me totals at any given point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I have three readings. Mr. Ailes would be my second.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 8225 also through Finance. This piece, everyone received an email from the clerk, I think, law director sent us an email, so any questions on this? This is an additional $37,000 allocation for mailing expenses in the clerk or court's office, which I found crazy, that they spend $70,000 a year on mailing stuff, but they also really don't have a choice, correct?
That's correct. I'm sorry.
Didn't it raise it when they had to hire somebody to do extra work, or that, wasn't that part of that?
For the mailing?
To...
Yes, when they added the additional person, that person was responsible for sending out notices to all of the individuals who had failed to appear or were delinquent on their payment plans.
And that wasn't really us doing it. We were told to do that.
Correct, the state of Ohio required us to do that. But also, so you know, you know, kind of to Tom's point, the clerk's office keeps track of all of the cases and all of the case filings, and civil filings particularly are up significantly this year. And our civil filings are actually served on people via first-class U.S. mail. So, that's where a lot of the expense is coming from.
Any questions? No? All right, I have Mr. Ailes as my second on that one as well.
Yes.
Thank you, and we'll go three readings on both. Any other resolutions we need to discuss? I didn't see any previous. So, ordinances, temporary ordinance 4925 is coming through the Administrative Services Committee. Mr. Luftenberg?
Yes, I'd like to ask the Safety Service Director or the law director, whoever wants to address this one.
We can tag team if you'd like. So, this piece is the annual pay ordinance for the parks. They got it in a little bit earlier than the rest of the city, so it's a little bit earlier than all of the other paid ordinances that you're going to be receiving later this year, but essentially, they're just wanting to change some titles. It's the same number of employees. They're not adding additional employees. It's the same number of employees, and this will not be effective until January of 2026, or Pay 1 of 2026, I guess I should say. But I'm open to any questions, or if the law director has anything else to add. I just wanted to say procedurally, Councilman Luftenberg and I talked about prior to the meeting, the probably easiest way, I talked to the clerk about this as well, probably the easiest way to do this is to go ahead and let it be read three times and then table it, and hopefully, at that point, we'll have caught up with some of the pay ordinances that should be coming out of every other, you know, department or citywide pay ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Bittler will be my second.
Yes.
And we'll go three readings, and then we'll table it.
All right, sounds good. Any other questions on that one before we move on? All right, next is temporary ordinance 5025. That is coming through Economic Development Committee. Mrs. Hoop?
Yes, this is just to kickstart the TIF for the residential portion, which is the 90 to 100 units, single-family units along Sheridan Drive. So, it determines the overlay, so we can notify people and just get it started. We are going to have to suspend, so just one reading, and Councilwoman Kreitz is my second.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on this piece?
I do. We saw this come over our desk earlier this year, and at the time, I raised a question about the width of the lots on the plat that we were looking at, and they're only 40 feet wide. And it's my understanding these homes are going to be in the $250,000 to $300,000 range, and if I was spending that kind of money, I would expect a two-car garage. However, our local zoning code won't allow that, because it says, let me find them, no. A 18-foot wide garage can only constitute a maximum of 42% of the frontage on the house. And for us to be able to have a two-car garage in any of those houses, the home would have to be 38 feet 4 inches wide, which would not fit on a 40-foot wide lot with 5-foot setbacks on either side. So, I don't understand, is this a valid, is this a plat that we are agreeing to of 94 houses? Because that's what they have shown consistently on 40-foot wide lots. And if we're expecting revenue from 94 homes in terms of taxes, when the zoning code will only allow maybe 60 homes in that subdivision, unless they're going for a variance, which very well may be, but then we're going to end up with a roadway of just, all we're going to see is 16-foot wide garage doors up and down the road, if everybody gets two-car garages. And I just, I don't know that that's a viable subdivision at 250,000 to 300,000. A crack.
Someone can answer. I understand what you're asking. I don't know if it's relevant to this piece that we're dealing with.
Well, we're looking at a TIF, and an incentive district.
Because you and I wouldn't buy a house that looked like that, but maybe someone else is fine with buying a house like that.
I think there's probably, the city has looked at the kind of revenue that 94 houses, the real estate taxes on 94 houses would bring in, but I don't see how they're going to have 94 houses under the current zoning code. I think that's not, it's not a valid depiction of what's going to go in there, unless Planning Commission gives them a variance, at which case, you know, then I think we're looking at just a row of garages up and down either side of the road, if they do two-car garages, in a $300,000 home, which I would expect to have in a $300,000 home. So, I'm just asking a question. Is this a valid plat that we can depend on?
This is not a plat.
Well, it's a description. We've seen it a few months ago. We're now seeing it twice in this legislation with 94 lots at 40-foot wide.
This is a design plan.
Right.
And design plans are subject to change, right? And so, this is what they anticipate doing, and that's what we would like to see them do, but we don't know that this is what's going to happen. Single-family...
Who's "we" in this? You're saying this is what we would like them to see?
I think the city...
I'm asking my city council members if they would like to see a subdivision full of two-car garages up and down the road on either side, because that's what we'll get unless they get a variance.
You didn't let me finish.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We, and I think I speak for the city administration when I say, we need single-family houses.
I get that.
We are desperate for single-family houses. We would like to see some single-family houses in Lancaster, one way or the other, and this is the only project that we have moving forward at this point. And that "we" is, as in the whole city, the city of Lancaster. These are the new homes that we have potentially, and that's it. And so, I think the thought is, let's get the TIF in place, let's make it, you know, beneficial for the developer to come here and build some houses. What those houses look like is not ultimately up to me or the administration, right? Like you said, it's based on the zoning code, and then also, the city engineer is going to weigh in. Our planning and zoning department is going to weigh in, and then if they need any variances or ordinances, they go to either Planning Commission or the Board of Zoning Appeals for that. But that's further down the line, way further down the line than where we are right now. Right now, all we're doing is saying, it looks like there could be 94 homes, and 94 homes could, you know, potentially bring in this much money, and that would cover a portion of the dollars that they're going to have to put into the ground to put the infrastructure there in order to get a builder to come and actually build something.
Well, and that's my question. We're assuming the revenue generated by 94 homes, and I question what kind of homes will be built there. If there are one-car garage homes for 250,000, will they sell? I don't know. I don't know if there's a market for that. Listen, Lancaster, I know, needs single-family homes. I'm well aware of that. I'm just looking at this proposal, and if we're anticipating revenue based on 94 homes on a 40-foot wide lot, I don't know. I don't know that that's the style of community that we want to see in Lancaster. It's just two-car garages up and down the street with an 8-foot wide, I mean, a two-car garage is normally about 22, a tight two-car garage, tight, is 22 feet wide, which leaves 8 foot of frontage on the house to fit on a 40-foot lot with a 5-foot yard setback. 8 foot of frontage for the front door and a side window. That's it. And I can't imagine a subdivision like that in Lancaster. I would think if I was a developer, I'd be thinking more in terms of a 50-foot wide lot that can give me a little bit of frontage with a two-car garage. I think those would sell like hotcakes. And I question whether a single family, or a single-car garage will sell for that kind of money, and maybe they're not looking to build, I just heard 250,000 to 300,000 on the homes.
That's accurate, but can I remind you that it doesn't matter really in terms of what these properties bring in with regard to property tax revenue to the TIF?
Oh, okay.
Any money that they get in goes towards that infrastructure, and they're happy with it. We're not offering, or agreeing, or assuring them that they will be able to pay off the money that they're going to spend to put in that infrastructure. So, if these houses end up selling for, you know, $150,000 apiece because people aren't happy with the design and the look of them, the developer's just as happy to get that TIF money back as reimbursement, you know, as anything. They're trying to make something on the deal, and obviously, we don't have the cash to put in the ground for infrastructure improvements, and so this is kind of the trade-off. We have to do this in order to get the single-family houses.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Kinda.
Ms. Bittler?
Hold on. This is going in front of Planning, at least I've recommended that they go back in front of Planning Commission for the Phase 2. The first phase was the multifamily units, was focused on that. They had a layout in that preliminary plat that was kind of graded out, and oh, by the way, they had, I don't know how many more lots than they, they did some grading, and they figured out that the terrain out there wasn't going to allow them to get that many lots. So, they went from 100, I'm guessing, 120 lots down to 97 lots. So, this, they're in the process, or at least I've recommended to them that they update that preliminary plat and take it to Planning Commission, and that's where we're at with the engineering of the project, the multifamily. Those plans are all in, they're all being reviewed. The preliminary plat's been approved. We're going through that process.
Yeah, the multifamily looked great. That layout looked great to me. I was just concerned about the single-family portion of it, so we'll see where it goes.
Ms. Bittler?
I need someone to educate me a little bit, please. How were the, who determined the dimensions of this overlay? And how is that determined?
The TIF overlay is based on who owns the property.
Okay.
And so, it's one property owner for the entire parcel.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we're asking for suspension tonight?
Yes, sir.
And Mrs. Kreitz is your second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, moving on. Temporary ordinance 5125 coming through Finance. This is yearly, did I write that correctly? Yearly bond legislation for the municipal court renovation. So, I'll let...
Yeah, yearly note bond, yearly debt.
Okay, so...
This is an annual piece that we've been doing for quite some time. It's the Colombian courthouse cost overruns that the county treasurer, Fairfield County Treasurer, has graciously been financing for us over the years, and the courts have been paying down 180,000 on the principal payment plus interest to the county for years. So, this is an annual piece. We're paying down 180,000 off of last year's note, so they're renewing a note with the county treasurer for 180, so this will be the last time. This one piece should come before you, because they'll be paying it off next year.
Great. Any questions? Seeing none, I have that as three readings with Mrs. Bittler as my second. Temporary ordinance 5225, that's coming through Public Works, Ms. Teener.
Kurt, do you want to come up and talk about this? 5225 regarding the easement for Fair Avenue?
So, this was a minor subdivision that came in. It's the Ohio Power Company, or AEP, expanding and building onto their substation. It's at the end of East Fair Avenue, east of Sheridan Drive, you know, past James Road. It goes up to the Midill School. It was a dead-end street. They wanted to do a new access off of the end of that street. Our code doesn't allow that, so Planning Commission granted them a variance to allow that lot split if they built a cul-de-sac bob at the end of the street, so folks could turn around. They've agreed to do that, and they've bonded. The project, we're working through the engineering. This is the easement that they're giving us to allow people to use that cul-de-sac bob to turn around.
Thank you. Any questions? No? All right, I have that as two readings with Mr. Luftenberg?
Yes, please.
Great. Okay, and last ordinance introduced tonight, temporary ordinance 5325 coming through the Law Committee with Ms. Kreitz.
Yes, thank you. Stephanie, would you mind covering this for us?
Sure thing. So, at your special council meeting on Monday, the 15th, there was a conversation about completely banning fireworks, consumer fireworks specifically in the city limits.
Sorry.
And so, my assistant law director did a survey of kind of all of the local political subdivisions that do that, and came up with a version of what we're calling Chapter 550 in Part 5, the General Offenses Code, that does that. And I'll just highlight a couple of things for you. So, in order to still have public exhibitions of fireworks, we have to have some process for regulating those. Previously, it was just simply a permit, but now that, you know, we're completely banning consumer fireworks, we have to make sure that any public display, any licensed exhibitor is using the appropriate fireworks and is actually licensed to do that. And these are fire code rules, a lot of them. Also, the Ohio Revised Code governs and regulates the occupation of being a licensed exhibitor for purposes of fireworks. And so, that's why all of that essentially is in there. We did carve out an exception for party poppers, smoke devices, snake or glow worms, snappers, trick matches, and wire sparklers, which are the smaller items that you can generally purchase in like Kroger or something like that, those that aren't anticipated to cause any large-scale damage or public safety issues, although they certainly cause plenty of small-scale and, you know, otherwise damage issues. But regardless, those are carved out. And then, there was one error that Councilwoman Kreitz caught in 55002C. We had anticipated potentially putting the permit fee into the codified ordinance, but then decided not to do that, because then anytime that we wanted to change the potential fee, we would have to come back before city council and change that fee, whereas the Service Safety Director has the authority and the ability to change most of our other fees, and we would want to make sure that it's in line with all of the work that police and fire are going to have to do in order to execute essentially this chapter of the code. So, we didn't want to guess at a number and just put a number in there. We're going to let that be the Service Safety Director's determination after they start doing this and start actually seeing how much work that's going to require. But so you're aware, I know we had the question, this doesn't allow just anybody to become a public exhibitor. You have to go to the state fire marshal. It's a license with a written exam, and then also a proficiency, basically, test to demonstrate that you have the ability to, you know, buy these from the right place, store these in the right place, display them properly, et cetera. So, that's a time-consuming and expensive process, and also, you know, there's a test. So, hopefully, only folks that should actually be doing that are doing that. But regardless, if you become a public exhibitor, our fire chief and our police, our chief of police, sorry, getting all my chiefs mixed up, they still have to verify that you're complying with all those other rules that the fire code requires. So, the distance from structures, the distance from children, not doing it in the public street, not under the influence of alcohol when they're doing it, et cetera. So, it's kind of a double layer of protection essentially for public exhibits or public displays of fireworks. And I think that's about it, unless anybody has any questions or anything else they want to know about it.
Anyone? Okay. I have that as three readings. Mr. Bizjack is your second?
Yes, sir.
Yes? Great. Any other ordinances that we need to discuss? Seeing none. Department updates. Does anyone from the city have a department update?
Yes, Ms. Woody?
I'll have just a couple for you. So, first, I just wanted to make everyone aware, I think that we've talked about this before, but as a friendly reminder, you will have your first draft of the 2026 budget, first reading on our October 6th board meeting. So, I know everyone's super excited about that. Second of all, I wanted to let you know that we have partnered with the Fairfield County Health Department. Bailey Blevins wrote a grant with the Healthy Eating Active Living Grant through the Ohio Department of Health. It is a safety grant, and so if you drive up North Broad Street, right in front of Mount Pleasant Elementary, they have some temporary markings where they are just kind of practicing to make that intersection a little bit safer for pedestrians and the kids walking to and from school. So, if you see those, one, they are temporary markings, but two, thanks to the Fairfield County Health Department for being willing to partner with us to try and make that intersection and that school zone safety a little bit safer. If it does go well, then we will look at making those permanent markings, but they're going to be practicing with it over the next couple of weeks and getting feedback from the schools. So, just wanted to make everyone aware of that. And then lastly, I wanted to say thank you to our Water Pollution Control Department and our Stormwater Department. I see Curtis out there. I don't think Stephen was able to make it. But this year, United Ways Community Care Day, Curtis and Jake from Stormwater and Stephen Wellstud did a United Way Community Care Day project where we had numerous city employees that volunteered, as well as numerous other volunteers that were not city employees. They all volunteered to go out and clean up litter off of the bike path and clean out debris and trash out of our waterways, specifically in the Baldwin Ewing and Fetter's Run, where we had all of the flooding event earlier this year. So, a huge thanks to them for doing that. I don't know, I didn't see exactly how many pounds of trash we pulled out, but I know it was significant. So, just wanted to let everyone know that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Trish?
I just wanted to give Council an update that our city's bond council is currently working on the lovely annual Edie Road TIF notes that will be coming before you for three readings. Sorry, council clerk, for reading, you have to read all of those appertains. But yeah, so that'll be coming. It's an annual piece out for the debt, for the developer note debt. So, and those won't be paid off after, those are still continuing for a while, just to give you guys a heads up.
Thank you. And we like to go three readings on those, so she has to read the big, long...
Yeah, I got you.
At least it's not the pharmacies.
That's true. That's true. Okay. Any other department updates? Seeing none. Council meeting prep, Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Chairman Schoonover. Tonight, we do have one public hearing. It's regarding the zoning map amendment due to the annexation of 163.4434, plus or minus acres from Greenfield Township to the city of Lancaster.
Great. Anything else? Good?
That's it.
Any other discussion items for finance? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved. Still.
We are adjourned at 6:28.
The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will commence at 6:40. Please rise if you're able and join me in a moment of prayer. God, grant us the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and finally, the wisdom to know the difference. The September 22nd, 2025 Lancaster City Council meeting is called to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Here.
Mrs. Bitler.
Here.
Mr. Bizjack.
Here.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Here.
Mrs. Hoop. Mr. Luttenberg. Mr. Schoonover.
Here.
Mr. Solly.
Here.
Ms. Teener.
Here.
And Mr. Wing.
Here.
Let's the record reflect that all 10 members of Lancaster City Council are present. Now move to the reading and disposing of the journal.
I have two of them this evening, one for regular meeting minutes dated September 8th, 2025, and another for special meeting minutes dated September 15th, 2025.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
A motion and second to receive and file the journal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Reports of city officials.
I have seven this evening. I have email dated September 9th, 2025 regarding temporary resident, or resolution 74-25 in Frederick Street Sewer Separation Project submitted by Stormwater Manager Stephen Wellsted. Email dated September 10th, 2025 regarding 129th anniversary copper cornerstone box removal and discovery submitted by Facilities Manager Eric Nolan. Email dated September 11th, 2025, Friends of the Parks Invite submitted by Council Member Ailes. Email dated September 12th, 2025 regarding resident pool survey submitted by Parks and Recreation Supervisor Stephen Gayville. Email dated September 10th through the 18th, 2025 regarding, regarding north water, north water plant costs submitted by President Porter, Denise Cruz, and Auditor Nettles. Series of emails dated September 19th, 2025 regarding community, community development update submitted by City Planner Chaslin Carter. Email dated September 22nd, 2025 regarding intersection at Sixth and High Street submitted by Council Member Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
Your motion is second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Communications.
I have four of them. Email received September 9th, 2025, public records request on hazardous materials incidents submitted by Taylor, credit, credited by Brown and Codwell. Email received September 11th, 2025 regarding public records request of Telus Health as a vendor submitted by Sarah Harmon of Smart Procure. Email dated September 19th, 2025 regarding public records request for Mr. Nisley Lancaster City Council Facebook page submitted by the Ohio Society of Request. And, oh, that's it? Sorry. I thought there were four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
Your motion is second to receive and file the communications. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Special presentation and warrants?
There are none this evening.
Petitions and memorials?
There are no petitions or memorials this evening.
Thank you. We've now reached the time in our agenda for permission of voters and taxpayers to address council. There is a three-minute rule to address council, and we ask that you do sign in at the podium with your name and address as you begin speaking. Please keep in mind, this is an opportunity to address council. It is not a question and answer session, and you should not direct any comments to any other audience members. Thank you. And it looks like we have somebody here waiting, so.
My name is Amy Schleick. I live on Lanrico Boulevard and more opportunities to provide to council. So there's things that.
Excuse me, can you speak?
There are things that we are doing in Lancaster. So coming up is Charles B. Shaw Gala. It'll be October 2nd downtown in Provisions Bakery and Deli fundraiser for Harkam House.
We cannot hear what you're saying. You need to speak up.
So if you go to Provisions on October 2nd, am I loud enough now?
Yes.
Okay. It is the Charles B. Shaw Gala. And if you attend, it's the fundraiser for the Harkam House because they need the funds. And you could buy some art, but you could also enjoy just wine and lots of good food. Second, we, we, me, so me and some other people have started an exploration of possibilities. It's going to be here in Lancaster at the Crossroads Event Center. It is for middle school age and up individuals with disabilities so that they can have a one-day free event, not a large time constraint for them to try out art in a fashion that they can then maybe explore and revisit. And you have a lot of art and artists around in downtown Lancaster. And so it's something that we hope if they like it, then you start to receive the revenue from it because they will visit all those people downtown. Lastly, this is not really a question, but sort of a request. I have spoken with individuals at the police department about sort of a registry with 911 when and/or if there would be a household that would call. Let's say in my case, my youngest son would call and he's nonverbal, I would still want somebody to be sent, but they want to know that necessarily unless they knew that information, which I could voluntarily give them, much like the State Highway Patrol will allow you to give them information if you're pulled over by them. It just so happens that Athens County has completed and now has the Peaceful Encounter Program. It's a database. It's voluntary. You sign up. It's meant to do more than special needs. It's for those individuals that might have mental health issues or schizophrenia or whatever, but it's their voluntary assertion to do that and sign up. I think it is Clark Township, it's Delaware. They have begun with their fire department, basically a special needs registry, and that is not really a database, but a form. And so I don't really care which way you go, if it's a database or if it's a form, but I feel like this is a life-saving measure for individuals, for first responders. If they get in, if they address the issue and they get out quickly, it helps everybody. And I just want to make sure that we're making the progress and you don't have to reinvent the wheel. Just go talk to Athens or Clark Township in Delaware and you can find that information out. And I'm probably at time.
You've reached your three minutes. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Rob Nisley. I'm at 802 Pennsylvania Avenue. I just wanted to talk to you guys tonight about fireworks. I am opposed to banning fireworks. I believe that it would be a shame for this council to severely. I believe that it would be a shame for this council to severely restrict or ban fireworks in the city. I believe that the people have spoken through their elected representatives at the State House to legalize fireworks in a very limited, in my view, capacity. I believe there are reasonable restrictions already in state law on the use and proliferation of fireworks, and I believe that the city should, if there's an issue with fireworks, I believe there should be more resources put to enforcing the law already on the books as opposed to banning or restricting them further. And furthermore, I would love to see, in regards to the tragic events of last, last week with the assassination and martyr of Charlie Kirk, I would love to see this city pass a resolution honoring him and potentially even some sort of a memorial in the city erected to the free discourse of ideas and the gospel-centered work of Charlie Kirk. I think that'll be a very welcome addition to the city. And with that, I will yield back my time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Daniel Egnetoff, and am I audible?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Daniel Egnetoff, and I believe this has probably been brought to council's attention before because Ryan and Amanda Everett are my neighbors, and I think that they're good at bringing things to people's attention, but the intersection of South High Street and Chestnut Street is a pedestrian fatality waiting to happen. It is not a question of if, it is a question of when. That intersection is on a block with a church, a preschool, and a public park, and horns and squealing tires are not daily, they are hourly. I live right there. I work from home many days, and it is a miracle. As far as I'm aware, that no one's died there yet. It is, it needs to be a four-way stop or a traffic light or something of that nature. It is really, I feel like I am gambling with everything every time I drive through there to go home. So I appreciate your time, and that's really all I had. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that wishes to address? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, John Bradford, 1360 Frederick Street, Lancaster, Ohio. Yeah, I want to address fireworks as well, and I guess one of the first things I'd say to my friend up here who I've not met before, but yeah, I like the Charlie Kirk idea, and also like the idea of that Rudy Giuliani had about how do you manage crime in a city.
Sir.
And one of them is to...
Please address your comments to council, please.
One of them is to have a zero tolerance for problems, and I want to say fireworks is that type of problem within our city. And right now, actually, there's no place pretty much in the city of Lancaster where you could set a firework off and be within the state guidelines as a consumer. And so we need some stricter enforcement on that to stop this type of abuse of fireworks within the city of Lancaster. I've walked my neighborhood several times. We have a gentleman or a group of neighbors in that neighborhood out there that just thinks every year is going to get a little crazier, a little wilder, and it's happening everywhere. So that, we need, we need some strict enforcement here. And I think putting the word out that that, that type of, we need to restrict fireworks, and I think that's a good way to do it. So I'm all in favor of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else this evening that wishes to address Lancaster City Council? Seeing none, we thank you for coming this evening. We'll now move on into the agenda with reports of standing committees.
I have four of them. I have Water, Water Pollution Committee Agenda dated September 11th, 2025 submitted by Mr. Wing. Public Works Committee Meeting Agenda, or Minutes dated September 18th, 2025 submitted by Mrs., by Ms. Teener. Water, Water Pollution Committee Minutes dated September 19th, 2025 submitted by Mr. Wing. And Finance Committee Meeting Agenda dated September 22nd, 2025 submitted by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Reports of special committees.
There are no reports this evening.
Thank you. We will now move on to the time in our agenda for a public hearing, a public hearing regarding the zoning map amendment due to the annexation of 163.4434 plus or minus acres from Greenfield Township to the city of Lancaster. Public hearings are conducted in the following fashion. We will first take public comment, if there are any, from the proponents of the zoning map amendment. After we receive the comments of those and, those proponents, we would take any comments from opponents of the zoning map amendment. And then we would follow up with any rebuttal of only those individuals who spoke as proponents at the beginning of the public hearing. So your comments would be limited to three minutes, and moving forward, do we have any individuals here who are proponents of the zoning, proposed zoning map amendment? Please come forward, state your name, and make sure that you sign in.
Good evening, council members. My name is Craig Moncrief. I am the attorney for the applicant, Mark Powers, who owns the four properties involved with this rezoning. Just want to give some background on this. This has been working in lockstep with both the city and the county on both the annexation and the rezoning of these parcels. These are parcels on both sides of 33. On the east side of 33, just directly adjacent to my client's property is, is a property owned by the Port Authority. There has been extensive movement on entering into a contract on that property, both my client's property and the Port Authority's, for some advanced manufacturing, and that is why we are here before you to both annex that property and rezone it, and the property he owns across the street. Like I said, I think this is an ideal location for some type of advanced manufacturing use with its highway location and separated from the heart of your residential district. Opportunity for jobs, to increase tax base, and just a location that makes sense, and I think his zoning that makes sense. Planning Commission has recommended approval. Staff has recommended approval. Annexation is before you and will be before you in two weeks. So I'm here, happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other individuals here speaking as proponents for the zoning map amendment? Seeing and hearing none, we will now move on to individuals who might be opponents to the zoning map amendment. Are there any individuals who wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we will conclude the public hearing as there would be no opportunity for rebuttal. Thank you for your attention to this matter this evening. We are now going to move on to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of resolution, temporary resolution 7325.
A resolution to amend permanent resolution 95-22 authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for construction of the North Water Treatment Plant Replacement Project. This is through Water, Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record resolution numbered 73-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 7325. Any comments?
Yeah, this, yeah, this just amends the authorization for the North Water Plant because of some final change orders.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
And Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 7325 passes 10 to 0. Temporary resolution 7425.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Water Pollution Control Loan Fund program for the planning, design, and/or construction of the Frederick Street Sewer Separation Project to execute contracts and agreements as required and to designate a dedicated repayment source for the loan. This is through Water, Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record resolution temporarily numbered 74-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, gross, and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 7425. Any discussion, councilmember Wing.
Yes, this is giving approval for the loan application for the Frederick Street Sewer Separation Project taking place next year.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
And Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 7425 passes 10 to 0. Temporary resolution 73, or 7525.
A resolution to increase receipts appropriated from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor and the special improvement district fund 2020. Through Finance Committee, Mr. Schoonover and Mrs. Bitler.
Councilmember Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 7525.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, gross, and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 7525. Any discussion, councilmember Schoonover.
Just as a reminder, we received a small amount of additional phones that need appropriated for the Sid in order to move forward with that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 7525 passes 10 to 0. Temporary resolution 7625.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement for engineering services for the Lawrence Street Pump Station Replacement Project. This is through Water, Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution numbered 76-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, gross, and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 7625. Discussion, councilmember Wing.
Yes, this is authorizing the engineering contract and paying for it from the 6029 Fund.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
And Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 7625 passes 10 to 0. Temporary resolution 7725.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required. This is through Water, Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution numbered 77-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, gross, and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 7725. Councilmember Wing.
Yes, this is an annual state grant that the city applies for every year, and if awarded, this will go towards the Tiki Lane Waterline Replacement Project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 7725 passes 10 to 0. We have no resolutions for second readings, therefore we will move to first readings, beginning with temporary resolution 7925.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to apply for a grant through the Ohio Public Works Commission to fund the Reese Avenue and West Hubert Avenue Rehabilitation Project and to declare an emergency. This is through Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener and Mr. Luchtenberg.
Councilmember Teener.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 7925. Temporary resolution 8025.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for mowing and trimming of the city cemeteries. Again, this is through Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener and Mrs. Kreitz.
Councilmember Teener.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 8025. Temporary resolution 8125.
A resolution to authorize the law director to negotiate and enter into, to a contract with the city of Reynoldsburg for their prosecution of adult misdemeanor traffic and criminal offenses committed in the city of Reynoldsburg within Fairfield County, Ohio, and to accept payment for the same. This through Finance Committee, Mr. Schoonover and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Schoonover.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 8125. Temporary resolution 8225.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor and the general fund 1001. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Schoonover and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Schoonover.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 8225. We'll now move on to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the third reading of temporary ordinance 4125.
An ordinance to amend Title III, Chapter 915 and 916 by repealing and replacing existing sections 915.04A, 915.05A, and 916.08C of the codified ordinances of the city of Lancaster, Ohio, and to declare an emergency. This is through Water, Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary ordinance numbered 41-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, gross, and enter upon the written record, temporary ordinance 4125. Any discussion, councilmember Wing.
Yes, as you'll remember, this is the wastewater rate adjustment, extends a 3% increase through 2029, and the biggest change is it requires industrial users to pay the same amount per gallon. Again, one gallon of water is the same as one gallon of water or wastewater, no matter who you are. So this is an important change, and a big win for the residential user, and I urge passage.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 4125 passes 10 to 0. Temporary ordinance 4425.
An ordinance to amend Lancaster Codified Ordinance, Part 7, Business Regulation Code, Chapter 709, cultivation, processing, or dispensing of medical marijuana or adult-use cannabis by repealing and replacing section 709.05, review and reappeal of adult-use cannabis moratorium. This is through Law Committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mrs. Bitler.
Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, ordinance temporarily numbered 44-25.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, gross, and enter upon the written record, temporary ordinance 4425. Discussion, councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, briefly. We passed a moratorium in 2024. This legislation will extend that for up to two years. Due to legislation that's pending before the state regarding the tax monies, we wanted to wait before council took any action on it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Temporary Ordinance forty-four twenty-five passes ten to zero. Temporary Ordinance forty-five twenty-five.
An ordinance to repeal and replace existing permanent ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four, section of the setting public improvements inspection, these pursuant to Lancaster Codified eleven-zero-seven point zero-two A, and to declare an emergency. Law Committee, Ms. Kreitz and Mr. Bisjack.
Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Ordinance temporarily numbered forty-five dash twenty-five.
Second. We have a motion, second, to pass gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance forty-five twenty-five. Discussion, Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, the city wants to allocate fees for inspections into a single, into a single fund and use a single inspector instead of using multiple inspectors and multiple accounts. And this will streamline the process going forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Temporary Ordinance forty-five twenty-five passes ten to zero. We'll now move on to second reading, beginning with forty-six twenty-five.
An ordinance to accept the annexation of one-six-three point four-three-four plus or minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mrs. Kreitz.
Councilmember Hoop.
Yes, this is second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Ordinance forty-six twenty-five. Temporary Ordinance forty-seven twenty-five.
An ordinance to amend the zoning map subject to passage of the annexation of one-hundred-and-sixty-three point four-three-four plus or minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mr. Wing.
Councilmember Hoop.
This is second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Ordinance forty-seven twenty-five. Temporary Ordinance forty-eight twenty-five.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to accept an easement for access to the closed county infirmary cemetery on parcel number zero-five-three-three-one-eight-one-one-one-zero and to declare an emergency. This is through Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener and Mrs. Kreitz.
Councilmember Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Ordinance forty-eight twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Ordinance forty-eight twenty-five. Any discussion on the motion to suspend?
Not this time.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yeah.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Ordinance forty-eight twenty-five passes ten to zero. Councilmember Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance forty-eight twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance forty-eight twenty-five. Any discussion, Councilmember Teener?
Yes, this is so we can accept a permanent easement so that we can mow, continue to mow the closed county infirmary, I cannot say that, see, now I'm turning to you, the cemetery that's up on thirty-seven.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Motion to pass Temporary Ordinance forty-eight twenty-five is ten to zero. Move to the first reading of ordinances with Temporary Ordinance forty-nine twenty-five.
An ordinance to establish benefits, titles, and compensation for parks and recreation personnel employed by the city of Lancaster, Ohio, for the year two thousand and twenty-six and to declare an emergency. This is through Administrative Services Committee, Mr. Luchtenberg and Mrs. Bitler.
Councilmember Luchtenberg.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Ordinance forty-nine twenty-five. Temporary Ordinance fifty twenty-five.
An emergency ordinance delineating an overlay in the relation to the proposed Sheridan Drive incentive district within the city of Lancaster, Ohio, adopting the written economic development plan as to the same, setting the time and place of a public hearing, authorizing and gratifying the giving of notice to the Lancaster City School District and the Board of County Commissioners of Fairfield County, Ohio, all pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section five-seven-zero-nine dot four-zero-C, and its declared related rules and laws and dispensing with the requirement that is ordinance must be read on three different days. Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mrs. Kreitz.
Councilmember.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of Temporary Ordinance fifty dash twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Ordinance fifty twenty-five. Any discussion on the motion to suspend?
We discussed it during finance, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop? I'm sorry, Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Ordinance fifty twenty-five passes ten to zero. Councilmember Hoop.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance fifty dash twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, to pass gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance fifty twenty-five. Councilmember Hoop.
Not this time.
No, no, no comment? No, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler?
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Temporary Ordinance fifty twenty-five passes ten to zero. Temporary Ordinance fifty-one twenty-five.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of the one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in the anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of the renovation of an existing building for use by the city's municipal court, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Schoonover and Mrs. Bitler.
Councilmember Schoonover.
Be the first of three readings, please.
First of three readings on Temporary Ordinance fifty-one twenty-five. Temporary Ordinance fifty-two twenty-five.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to accept a perpetual easement for roadway purposes on East Fair Avenue and to declare an emergency. This is through Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener and Mr. Luchtenberg.
Councilmember Teener.
It's first of two readings.
First of two readings on Temporary Ordinance fifty-two twenty-five. Temporary Ordinance fifty-three twenty-five.
An ordinance to amend Lancaster Codified Ordinance as Part Five General Offenses Code and adopt Chapter five-five-zero fireworks. This is through Law Committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mr. Bisjack.
Councilmember Kreitz.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Ordinance fifty-three twenty-five. We have all concluded the reading of ordinances for this evening. We have two pieces of tabled legislation. I don't believe there's any indication that those are coming off the table at this time. Unfinished business. We have a liquor license for Bruyak LLC doing his brewskis' drive-through. I saved you from reading that, by the way.
Thank you.
Who's that?
Podcaster?
Yes, sir. So typically, what we do is wait until the chief of police has the background information for the individuals who are attempting to obtain the permit. Unfortunately, that either did not come from the Division of Liquor Control or it got lost in the shuffle. So what we had to do was some of our own research. The company that is transferring the license to Bruyak is Thodo LLC. They have had liquor violations in the past. So personally, based on my experience with what they did, they were selling products that had THC in them. I'm happy to see them giving up their license. They're giving it up to a company called Bruyak. From the publicly available information about Bruyak online, it is a beer cave-type specialty situation. And it is a corporation that has multiple locations and hopefully, a little more sophisticated business operation in terms of complying with the law. So at this point, you know, neither the chief of police nor myself could find anything about Bruyak that would cause us to give an objection. We'll just have to, you know, keep an eye on them, monitor and make sure that there are no violations in the future and then, you know, address that if there are. Thanks.
Thank you. So do we take a motion to approve the transfer? Thank you. I'll now accept a motion to approve the transfer of the license to Bruyak LLC.
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. New business. We'll now move on to committee updates or general updates of council members and we'll begin with Councilmember Hoop.
Finally, it's about time you start with me again.
Thank you. Well, you're easy. You're within the line of sight, so there you are.
I have a committee meeting on October thirtieth. And the only thing I could think of was about two weeks ago, DDL hosted a seminar called Unlock the Potential of Your Upper Floors. It was well-attended by twelve business owners slash property owners. And there were speakers, including industrial specialists, people from the city, like the fire chief, planning and zoning, building department. I thought it was very informative. Michael Wing was with me as well. And it brought together all the resources for the property owners to utilize or move forward if they wanted to utilize their third floor. So I thought it was good for downtown to utilize empty spaces and bring in some more sources of revenue.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We had our last Water, Water Pollution Committee meeting Monday of last week, so I do have a few updates. First, I want to give a very special recognition to our operators in the water department. I understand many of them are working twelve-hour days currently. They have two plants they have to keep running and a brand-new plant that's still slated for October first that they're also getting up and running, so that's a lot of work on their end. Water Pollution Control has successfully closed another combined sewer overflow location, which is great news. And been seeing lots of comments here and there on Facebook about the Main Street Sewer Separation Project. Happy to report that Phase Three is ongoing. That's the portion of Cherry Street that's closed. Phase Three is ongoing. So far, there have been no issues and that is slated, that phase of the project is slated to go through October tenth.
Thank you. Councilmember Bitler, any updates?
Nothing to report, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schoonover.
Yeah, I'm gonna piggyback on the last comment Michael made, the sewer separation project on Main Street. I did ask at the Public Works meeting and I'm happy to report that in that contract, they are supposed to pave the whole thing when they're done, because right now, Main Street in front of Circle K is like a, I don't even know what to call it, but it's really not anything nice when I drive through there. It's a mess, yes. And it feels that way, so kudos. Secondly, so finance, I think SSD Woody brought it up, so the budget stuff is coming. And I've mentioned it before, kind of stuck it out there, like your department head should be bringing budget items or their year-to-date stuff to the committee meetings. I know transportation and Mr. Dietz did that for us at Public Works, so that was nice to see. But, and I'm gonna go out on a limb here too, and the treasurer and the auditor are always available to help you dig into your stuff. The budgets, the budget is a big deal and it's huge. And I think from committee standpoints, we break it up because we, I mean, it's a lot to digest. So I think when we're talking about legislation from your committees or anything like that, the one, the council members that aren't involved in your committee, like, I'm banking on you to know what you're talking about. And if you're saying, hey, we vetted this, it looks good, you can trust me? I'm not saying that that doesn't mean we don't look, but, you know, unless you have an extra hundred hours a week to dive into the budget. I remember the first class that I went to that Mr. Stotin did for new council members. I mean, how many pages do we go through?
At least a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, so I'm not, I don't have time to look at a hundred and twenty, so my expectation is you know what's going on, so I can ask you directly and save a little bit of time. We did it before the meeting, asking about a piece from the park. So this is the time to, hopefully, you'll have time to reach out to administration, the auditor, the treasurer, and make sure that you have your ducks in a row to be able to point out something to the rest of us, like, hey, we need to have a bigger conversation. So that's my update, and that's what I'm hoping that you guys will do. And if you have any questions, obviously, I'm available as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. Councilmember Teener.
So getting closer to budget, I always have about October or so, or, well, August or September, have them bring their tentative budget so we can start looking at it now and ask questions about if there are vehicles, hires, retirement, because that's important to know. So we went through that at our last meeting on Friday, and the street paving for two thousand and twenty-six is now online. If everybody'd like to look and then call and complain to your council people, because your street's not getting done, that would be fun to do. So it's mostly Ward Two and Four this year is getting repaved.
Thank you for your update. Councilmember Kreitz.
I have no updates right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Ailes?
No updates.
Councilmember Luchtenberg?
I've got a committee meeting on the fifteenth of October, eight o'clock in City Hall, but other than that, no updates.
What room is it in?
Nineteen-eighty, is that what?
Eighteen-ninety-seven.
Eighteen-ninety-seven.
All right, there we go. All right, Councilmember Bisjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. Safety Committee's having their meeting October tenth at eight AM, eighteen-ninety-seven conference room. One topic I know that will be on the agenda, we'll be discussing the budget for the fire and police departments, so just making everybody aware of that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Sully?
No updates at this time.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
So in response to the question regarding the nine-one-one calls into the police department, I believe they have the ability already to enter notes when you call nine-one-one based on your address. The notes can indicate resident is blind, lives alone, who their contact might be. Disabilities of any type can be entered there. Unless something's changed since I retired in two thousand and seventeen, that technology already exists and is already available for use. I would also add that our police officers are about seventy percent trained in crisis intervention training to deal with people in crisis, whether it be disability and/or mental health crisis or addiction or whatever crisis they might be facing. I think it's a huge benefit for us over other communities because most cities are lucky to have ten to fifteen percent of their officers trained in crisis intervention training. But I'll double-check with the police department, and I'm pretty sure that technology is already available to address specific notes for a specific address regarding any issue that resident might have. Chestnut High, we will be coming forward with a plan to improve that intersection sometime in the not-too-distant future, but I am not aware of any pedestrian crashes up there, not in recent memory, anyway. It doesn't mean that everything that our speaker said is not accurate. I have near crashes there when I drive through there on a time, and you can't put a number of those. They didn't happen, so there's no stat checking a block saying that you have fifteen near crashes in a week or whatever it might be. So it is an area of concern and we do have a plan to address that intersection. And then the last thing I would say, we talked about legislation for municipal court, money for additional postage. That is directly related, as mentioned, to the hiring of an additional staff member to mail notices required by the Ohio Revised Code and a change that took place in the mid-year. If you recall, when the clerk came in, she asked for two employees and I actually persuaded her to ask for one and see how it worked out. I'm happy to report that one has worked very well for her and she has no plan of coming back and asking for a second employee, at least at this time. back and asking for a second employee, at least at this time. She's very comfortable with where they're at. The job is being done and being done well, so that worked out pretty well for us, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll now move on to the announcement of scheduled meeting. Oh, excuse me.
I just had one other.
Oh, Councilmember Kreitz.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate our mayor on his induction to the Veterans Hall of Fame for this year.
Congratulations.
It's very welcome.
Congratulations. Announcement of scheduled meetings.
Okay, next regular sessions of council, October 6, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers, and then October 20, 2025, at 6:30 in council chambers.
Special scheduled meetings?
I have none.
Regularly scheduled committee meetings.
I have Finance Committee, October 6, at 6:00 p.m. council chambers. Safety Committee, October 10, at 8:00 a.m. City Hall, 1897 conference room. Administrative Committee, October 15, at 8:00 a.m. Bless You, City Hall, 1897 conference room, and then Economic Development Committee, October 30, at 7:30 a.m. in the City Hall, 1897 conference room.
Thank you. Reading of bills.
I have one for MNCO for publications of ordinances, $111.82.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, we pay the bill.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to pay the bill. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. There's no need for an executive session. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adjourn.